All right, good evening. We can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have approval of the minutes of January 28th, 2025?
To the move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And approval of agenda as presented.
To the move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, and before, we recognize the public and there's a few of you that do want to speak. As far as the acknowledgement of reading books from the district's library system, I do want to remind the public that the books are approved for certain age groups and maturity levels. Since this is a public forum, there may be students participating in the board meeting where that content is not appropriate. And we are just publicly advising of that possibility and just asking you if you could just conduct yourselves accordingly. In lieu of reading the content aloud, we do also want to just provide the opportunity if you give us the copies of the pages at issue for the board's review. And just to reiterate that we are listening to the public's concerns about these books. And we've asked the administration to revisit our library materials reconsideration guidelines. So it's not that we are trying to stop anyone. We just want to make sure that what we are reading is appropriate for everybody in the room. So with that being said, first want to have Ms. Su Rizell. And then just five minutes and then give you one minute head drop, so.
Well, I'm almost ready to talk. But, can you hear me okay? But since Dr. Seuss's birthday is on Sunday and we're celebrating Read Across America next week, I wanted to come prepared with my Dr. Seuss hat. Because I want to do some level setting today with you and just to kind of find some common ground. I know there's been kind of some arguments going on about the issue of library books and age appropriateness and why we read in the schools. So, I just wanted to start off by saying that we read books to kids to help them feel safe. So, I know some of you have had some concerns about the safety of materials that we have in the school. Safety about other policies, telling kids about terrible things that are happening in the world and things like that. But in an age appropriate way, we do want to talk to our kids and we want to have them read in a safe manner things that they might be afraid of. Like, I think all of us in this room understand that we read children fairy tales. Like, just because a fairy tale might not be appropriate for some other children, it's appropriate for most kids. And I don't think we would want to take fairy tales out of the school. There's big bad wolves, they hate people. You know, this is scary stuff and it's age appropriate for very small children. And the reason we let them read things that are scary is because they're reading them in a book. They're using the words in the book, the descriptions, to make a picture in their head of this scary, scary thing. And then we give them the tools to critically think about that and to say, hey, this isn't a book and I am stronger than what's on these pages and I'm brave. And that's why we read fairy tales to kids. As they get a little older, we allow them to read some dystopian books. The Hunger Games is in our libraries and it is not a happy place. There are very, very bad things that happen in The Hunger Games. But again, we give them to our children to read because reading is a safe way to approach dangerous things and to overcome obstacles and to realize that you're a powerful person. And as our kids get even older, they're going to wonder more about the world. And we want to give them a safe place to read and explore about sex. You might have a very loving family at home and you might not ever have to worry about abuse. But that's not the case for all of the students in our schools. And kids who approach a book and say, this is a terrible thing that happened to these people in this book and they read for hours and hours, 300 pages of living the story with someone else and understanding that someone else went through this terrible thing and I should care about that. And perhaps if there's someone in my life who's fetching me inappropriately, I want to know about it and I'll have the power to stand up to that because I've read about it in a safe place in my book because the books give me the language to put those thoughts together. And children when they read, approach the material in an age appropriate way. If this child has not been abused, they're not going to have a picture of how terrible that might be because they're thinking about their past experiences and they're applying it in a very safe way to become a stronger person and to care about other people and to be challenged and to think critically. And I think that's part of what has been left out a little bit in this discussion. And I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page about that. And we are in school.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. And reading is very important. And if we're going to review books that are out there, we need to read those books and understand their value to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Michelle Miller.
At the February 18th meeting of the school board, there was discussion about the policies, procedures, and guidelines for book challenges. I would like to suggest some topics and situations that should be considered as part of that discussion. Number one, at any stage of the reconsideration request that involves the advisory committee or the policy committee, we need multiple people to read the book in its entirety and offer feedback. The purpose of having a committee is to get multiple opinions so the final decision will have considered all sides of the issue. Number two, when speaking about turnaround time for book reviews, 30 days was suggested. For multiple committee members to read the book in its entirety and provide feedback, you will need access to multiple copies. How much will that cost the schools and district? If only 100 books get challenged and two additional copies of each book are needed for committee review, then the average book costs $10 to $15 per copy, that's $2,000 to $3,000. Number three, one of the board members made a comment indicating they thought the reconsideration reviews will be easier when these challenges taper off. They won't taper off. There will be attempts to overwhelm the process with sheer volume as has been attempted in other school districts. The challenges will continue to come unless the board puts strict guidelines in place to prevent abuse in the process. Number four, the board needs rules and limitations for these reconsideration requests. I suggest first, if the reconsideration request form isn't fully filled out, the challenge should be thrown out. Similarly, if the person submitting the reconsideration form has not already requested that the school library remove their student's access to the book that they are submitting, the challenge should be thrown out. If you really mean you want to protect your student, then that starts with your actions. The board should also consider requesting proof that the submitter has read the book in the form of a recent physical library checkout, Libby checkout, or receipt from place of purchase. Next, there should be a penalty for frivolous reconsideration requests. If a person submits a certain quantity of reconsideration requests that are ultimately denied, they should be restricted from submitting more for a certain period of time. The board might also consider a monetary penalty that could go towards library purchases or compensating the advisory committee for their time as well as expenditures necessary for acquiring copies of the books being reviewed. Lastly, the board needs to set limits on how many active challenges one person can have at a time. Challengers should be prioritizing their reconsideration requests. Number five, school staff that participate in the review team absolutely need to be compensated for their time in doing so. I would like to encourage the Northern York County School Board to use the West Shore School District's Policy 109 as guidance as this aligns with the full wording and definitions of PA Title 18, Section 5903(c). The appearance of a sexual incident or profanity should not automatically ban a book from the library collection. The decision to include such material should rest on a judgment of literary and educational value of the whole work. The actual material of an educational nature on the level of the student should be included in the collection. The voice of those who find a specific and often out of context passage in a book objectionable should not drown out the rights of the other parents, guardians, caregivers, and students. If they don't want their student reading it because they cannot see the literary value of the text, then that is a decision between them and their student and should have zero impact on other parents. It's the responsibility of the parent, guardian, or caregiver to create and maintain open and honest communication with their student and to be able to speak about hard subjects. It's not the responsibility of the school district to prevent access to a book for everyone because someone is uncomfortable with the conversations it should prompt. Thank you.
All right, we're just trying to figure it out if this is on the agenda or not. All right, thank you guys. Joe Rizell.
Hello. So last week, Dr. Meakin pointed out that prior to the recent glut of book challenges, only one book was challenged in the last 15 years. So it's clear to me that this is a manufactured crisis. The real problem here isn't the books. It's a few residents who wish to abuse the system. They found a procedural loophole and it's being abused to get the district all wrapped around the axle. So, you might ask where this is going to end. I don't think the requests are going to taper off. I think they're going to continue. I think this is just the beginning. And maybe it will end with trying to ban books about slavery or the Holocaust or books by Black authors, Jewish authors, or female authors. Who knows? So last week, the board expressed a desire to make the review process more efficient. A board member suggested we could achieve this by not reading the books. I think the problem here is that we're not reading the books. I think schools should promote reading. Schools should promote intellectual curiosity. Schools should promote libraries. As my wife pointed out, a library is the safest place to explore the real world. A world which after all includes a lot of places that are outside of Dillsburg. And a lot of our kids will move into that world after they leave this school and we should be preparing them for that as best we can. And that means reading. So if we're serious about getting efficient, a better solution would be to find a way to limit nuisance challenges, especially if they're coming from the same few individuals. And I want to remind you that the current library guidelines do offer a reasonable remedy for parents who have a problem with what their kids are reading. Parents can submit a request to have the librarian block the kids from borrowing certain items. To me, that makes sense because I think a minimally invasive remedy is always preferable. As a very wise person once said, "It makes no sense to treat dandruff with decapitation." And you can Google that, it's very appropriate. And I think that's also a fair approach. As a parent, I don't want or need other adults making decisions about what my kids can or can't read. That's my right as a parent. And speaking of fairness, if the people making these requests have no kids that attend Northern, it would be fair to give their input less weight than those of us who do. And unlike this manufactured crisis, I want to remind you that this board is facing a lot of very real and very difficult challenges. So the ongoing facility maintenance problems, the need to accommodate an ever-increasing student population as we put more and more high-density housing here in the township, finding and keeping qualified administrators and teachers, building trust and good faith with the faculty so they can effectively do their jobs with minimal distractions, and a very real likelihood of limited, if any, federal subsidies going forward, which we saw last week was about a half million dollars that we're used to getting. So, the more the board focuses its time and attention on culture war shenanigans and gotcha spectacles, it's going to be less able to grapple with these very real and not manufactured problems, many of which have been lingering and growing for years. So I ask you to please get serious. Stop this book banning nonsense. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of resources. And it's anti-education. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to publicly thank Dr. Meakin and the administrative team for last Tuesday's Content Rich presentation on the administration's response to the board's request for the enhancement of Board Policy 109 and the underlying administrative guidelines. It was both broad and deep in scope and the administrative team did a phenomenal job of answering board members' questions about each layer of the policies and guidelines. Yes, it made for a long meeting, but, and I and I hope everyone else came out of that meeting with a much clearer understanding of how the process works. A few months ago, I asked the board to make school board meetings boring again. Remember that? Because that's where trust gets built, between the board, the administration, and the public. Policy 109 portion of last Tuesday's meeting is the best kind of boring. It was thorough. It was civil. It was professional. And it was transparent. I don't see how anyone could have walked away from that portion of the meeting thinking that it was unreasonable. It is my opinion that this was exactly the kind of transparent and public sausage-making that this community needs more of in school board meetings. Policy 109 and its underlying administrative guidelines present an opportunity for even greater transparency. As we know, several books have already been challenged through the pre-existing procedure that is becoming administrative guideline 109-3. Excerpts from some of those books were read at last month's public meeting. Maybe more excerpts will be read tonight. As a parent of two children in this district, I admit that I was alarmed by some of the content that was read during public comment last month. Rather than jump to conclusions about a few salacious passages though, I researched the books in question to see what context and merit may be behind the content. On one hand, I found resources that showed me awards that the books and their authors received along with reviews that relayed a sense of the actual plot that excerpts cannot adequately provide. On the other hand, I found resources that vigorously debated and challenged each book's age appropriateness, viewpoints, and even morality. Some of these sources even cited many of the exact same excerpts that we heard last month or last week. At the end of my digging, the only conclusion that I could come to is that I can't make an intellectually honest judgment on these books based solely on excerpts and awards lists or the reviews and ratings of others. To know if these books are suitable for my children to read during their high school years, I am going to have to read the books for myself. Reading a book in full is the only way to accurately contextualize its content. For this reason, I encourage the board and administration to lead by example and set the expectation that any challenged book be read in full at every stage of the review process being spelled out in the administrative guidelines under Policy 109. Whether it is the initial review by the principal, subsequent review if necessary by advisory committee, and further subsequent review if absolutely necessary by the school board policy committee, the book must be read in full by all to participate in the process. I would further ask the I would further ask the school board to lead by example by creating some form of determination report to issue to public record when the policy committee reaches a final decision to either retain or remove any resource material from the district. This report should reflect the pros and cons of the resource material in question and provide justification for the committee's decision specific to the material in question. Upon the creation and documented use of such a report, I would strongly encourage district administration to adopt a similar public record determination report for review levels covered under the underlying administrative guidelines of Policy 109. And since I have a little bit of time left, I'm going to quote the great George Carlin from his Seven Words You Can't Say on Television skit. Not going to say those seven words. There are no bad words, bad thoughts, bad intentions, and words. Thank you. Ms. Dana Weaver.
It is unclear who selects the four of the six-member advisory committee, as it is written. Is this committee seated for the school year? Is it on an as-needed basis? Only the first designee is actually clear, and that is that the advisory committee consists of the school librarian. That's clear. And then there's a central administrator assigned by the superintendent. Could this be faculty, staff, or even a board member? And then there's a parent of a student in the school who's not the objector. Selected by whom? Two faculty members, one from a grade level and one who is not. Selected by whom? And a student, middle or high school. Selected by whom? I've taken a couple months to travel, and I've met with former employees of Northern. The most troubling account was of a new hire tour of the facility, where the guide identified select faculty members as he went down the hall, pointing them out as, "That's a good Christian." I was also informed of a number of faculty that gabber regularly as a prayer group. Can you assure that at least only one of those participants will be positioned on any one advisory committee at any given time? Are you stacking the deck? Is what I'm asking. Book bans are oppressive. They target books based on social views, and the people who lose out are the low-income families or students whose parents cannot make it a priority for their kid to access books outside of school. Let's focus on the parents with the objections. Allow them to participate in their child's book selection while keeping their ideology to themselves. Concerned parents can submit a form requiring more information prior to their child signing a book out. They should have no say in what their neighbor's child reads. This is censorship overreach. To entertain that since Tom's parents object to a book, no other child in the school district shall have access. Although he would love it, we can't remove broccoli from Giant because my husband eats it. Children have different tastes, too. They read at different grade levels despite what actual grade they're in. And the parents should have a say in the maturity and skill levels achieved by their own child. It will certainly be easier for you to heed the wishes of individual families when it comes to reading preferences, rather than expose our community to a litigiously vulnerable ban of books. But if you're going to allow constituents who do not have children registered in this district to submit book titles for banning books neither they or you have read, I'm here to offer my first complaint. As recommended at the state level, I would ask that each complaint seeking a book banned include the page and paragraph of the offensive language in the book as I have provided here. I've printed out a synopsis. Can you pass this down? I'm going to review one, and then make sure that I think everybody gets one. So this is a book that is in your libraries. I've cited just ten verses out of hundreds of graphic, sexual, and violent content, which is contained in every version of this book and which is in your libraries. If you want a real good read, go for Ezekiel 23:20. Okay, didn't even include that one on there. Here's my forty-five seconds. Please do your job. Protect our children. Give them an education that allows them to compete in this world. And most importantly, leave them out of your political phrase and keep our district out of lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. And Samantha Groom.
Hello. I'm a parent of three current Northern students, and I came today to speak about the book removals and challenges. I, like many Northern York County School District parents, haven't read the majority of the books that were removed or challenged, but I have read one. The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison. This book was transformative for me, especially for me at a young age, a suburban white girl whose parents successfully shielded me from the real-life traumas of the world. This book was eye-opening for me. Not only did I learn about the darker side of life during the Great Depression, beauty standards, the importance of self-image, racial discrimination, I also learned more complex themes, too, some of which I had never experienced or was taught about, like internalized racism, systemic racism, sexual abuse, and the overall oppression of women by society and those who claim to have loved them. The immense value gained from these themes and lessons in this book far surpasses a few explicit scenes of sexual content, of which are actually crucial to understanding a lot of the themes presented in this book. For me, I would rather shield my children from experiencing the atrocities of the world firsthand, but I would never want to prevent them from reading about them. In fact, I would prefer they do so so that when they leave this town for school or work, they have a better, more robust grasp of what might await them. I was upset about these book bans, so I reached out to a dear trusted friend, and I asked, "How can they not see the value in these books?" And he told me, "Sam, most folks read something at surface level, and when the surface-level content has offended their sensibilities, there will be no more reading, and there definitely won't be anything learned or garnered from the body of the work as a whole." I, of course, was still upset, and I asked for his advice, and he told me, "Compromise. Try to appeal to another one of their sensibilities." So that's what I'm here to do. I by no means think that how my husband and I raise our kids is what's right for everyone. I would like to appeal to your sense of parental choice. Why can't we have a compromise, like a restricted section or a parental opt-in, opt-out feature? That way, those who want and don't want their children reading certain books are both served. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Diane Cummins.
Good evening, everybody. I'd also like to talk about the proposed procedures for Policy 109. And I want to thank the board for your discussion of this issue last week. It's clear that you're not taking the issue lightly. Library books and materials are important tools for learning and education. They provide students access to topics and the development of analytical skills. The purpose of a library is access to a wide variety of materials. I also agree that the West Shore policy I also agree with the West Shore policy because it underscores access to materials. And I believe that it's a standard that should be in place. And that policy has already been read here. Abrupt, knee-jerk censorship of any book found in a library is anti-freedom of speech and anti-education. Every parent here in Northern has the right to challenge their students' access to specific materials, and this practice is already in place in the district. It's a much more serious issue when one person or a few people want to ban access to the book for everyone. Last month, three parents stood up and read explicit passages to make, as Alyssa Eichelberger said, "A spectacle." Do they try to work with school personnel before doing that at the board meeting? Do they personally scour the library in search of questionable materials? Let's be clear. They were given a list of targeted books, and that list likely included those passages as well. Do they take the time to fully read the books to understand the passages and context? The good news is, is that the proposed policy here includes the formation of ad hoc committees to read the materials and make a recommendation. And I agree, too, with what was said previously. A book shouldn't be pulled from circulation based on one person's opinion. So that whoever makes the decision about that book should be required to read the book. That is the foundation of a sound policy in an educational setting, actually reading materials and analyzing them before passing judgment. Actually forming a group of objective readers to conduct the review. Each book should be considered innocent until reviewed and found questionable for age appropriateness. This is due diligence, and it's educationally sound. Last week, Dr. Meakin mentioned a number of review requests that had already been filed. As of yesterday, that number is thirteen. Just because there's a list of targeted books that has been passed around area districts does not mean that there should be a rush to judgment about any one book here at Northern. The library is not on fire, and there is no emergency. If this takes some time to do it well, with respect for authors, ideas, and concerns, that's okay. To remove a book without reading it and reviewing it fully would be one-sided, uninformed censorship. It is important to follow the process. It's a sound one that includes educators, parents, and ultimately the board. And I ask you to move forward with this in mind.
Thank you very much for each of the comments, and then we'll move into...
I think we have another one? Dan?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
All right. I can just go on forward.
Thank you. I am going to talk about, as a mother. And at the beginning of the... My name is Sinera. Sinera Coulson. I live here, I have two kids in the school district. I have a very... A person in the district that taught me, a very amazing person, that even though we don't sometimes see eye to eyes, we love the same thing, art students. And the thing is, it'll be a true story. I... My background is different, so I will see the books or the events in a different way. So when I saw the curriculum, I talked to the teacher, and that was assigned to my son. And I reached out to the teacher, said, "Mr. Anderson, Mr. Anderson, I learned the history in a different way, and I'm very concerned about it." And he talked to me. I read the book, and he accommodated my fear or my background or my cultural. It was done. He did. He did a wonderful job. And see, but I didn't ask for it to be in any book. I didn't ask just because I'm different or I have a different point of view that everybody needs to follow me. No. It was done. He accommodated my request, and actually, he was able to teach me, Mr. Anderson. And I read the book, and I agree with him. You're right. That is, it should be done and should be teach to the kids. And actually, that's what I'm asking you guys. Reach out to the teacher of your part of their life. Go back, if you want to have a school meeting, go to those meetings, talk to them. But don't make a fuss something that is going to impact the school district. So the thing is, my problem, my concern was resolved. It was completely out of question, and it was, but it was done. And I thank you very much, and all the things that happened, I bring back to Mr. Meakin helped me. And the thing is, there is a clear line of talk here. They listen. And I am glad to be here, I'm glad to... And, but I'm going to tell about my experience. I had something, got a dress, and thank you very much.
I apologize. We just didn't have them in front of me, so I didn't want anybody to think we're talking just because Elizabeth Ayers.
Hello, nice to see you all. I know through Sue from the library that a lot of work has already gone into this issue, and I appreciate that. I did print off the, sort of, the flowchart I think that you were proposing that will be used now. It was mentioned earlier, fourteen books on the list. I have heard a much higher number is potentially in the pipeline. And right now, it looks like Steve Lehman, I'm guessing a lot of these are going to be at the high school level, I should say, Mr. Sauer as well, are going to be doing a lot of reading because they are the first stop on this. It also says that if the principal supports the request for reconsideration, then it looks like he or she could then just reconsider the book without going to a committee. But maybe I had that confused. I'm really here to talk about what a number of people have already said, is things can be taken out of context. And once you read them in context, there is a much greater whole and a much greater education. Unfortunately, sex is still somewhat of a taboo topic. It makes people uncomfortable. You don't want your kids coming across it, but they do. And so if they can come across it in an educated way and not stumble across it online in an unsafe way, wouldn't you rather have them do that? So they can... To me, books open up the entire world that is out beyond Dillsburg, beyond this country, sometimes beyond this globe, depending on what you're reading. And it can make kids feel safe and seen and not alone. And sometimes that has to do with sex, too. And that's okay, because they're at that age where that's part of their lives. So for us to come in and say that's not appropriate, we're not giving them the tools that they need. I point this out because Toni Morrison's Blue Eyes talks about incest. And this educator, Shamika Silvery, said that she had this book in her class, and over the years of teaching it, she had a student confided her that she was a product of incest. She had another student reveal that she had been molested by her uncle. Sometimes these books are the safe spaces that kids need to realize that they're not alone. And what they're going through, as horrible as it may be, they are not the only ones. And so who are we to say that they can't have this access? Thank you for your time.
Jennifer Bray.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. I want to apologize in advance because I didn't write my normal amazing speech that I would have given. I didn't have quite enough time. And I was in the midst of a hot flash, so apologies in advance. I just wanted to say, when I first came to Dillsburg, it was 1992. I was fourteen years old. I knew nobody. Luckily, my parents were... Well, at least my mom. My dad doesn't read very much. But anyway, they were intelligent enough to take me to Dillsburg Area Public Library. We went at least once a week. I was able to pick out whatever I wanted because I think really they just were happy that I was reading. It didn't matter what. Which is very evident because I read B.C. Andrews at fourteen. I read The Tale of Two Cities, The Color Purple. I read The Tale of Two Cities, The Color Purple, Dean Koontz, Stephen King. I've learned so much from those books and they were my companions that summer. I had nobody else until much later. But they opened my world to so many cultures. They created an empathy in me, they increased my vocabulary. I became a smarter person because of the books that I read. To this day, while I was going to say even The Color Purple, but even Romeo and Juliet had sex in it and it was taught to me in like grade. We had a conversation about it. It wasn't a big deal to us. It's still a running joke between my parents and I that I learned about puberty and sex from a book. It was a Christmas present for me, under the tree. Because my parents weren't comfortable talking to me about it. And I learned about it in a book. As Elizabeth was saying, The Color Purple was my book by Toni Morrison. I also learned about sexual assault and incest. And it gave me a deeper empathy for other things that people go through, things that my little wasp but did not. Because I am in the middle class and I'm a white girl. Regarding the policy for reviewing the books, when I was in high school, if I didn't read my homework for that, whatever passage we had to read for that day, the next day when I got quizzed, I failed. At this point, I think that it's in our best interest to read all of the books that are being questioned so that we don't fail the test. I would encourage everybody to, um, not limit the books that are accessible to children. That's all I got, thanks.
Laura Duncan.
Good evening. I want to thank board and community group for encouraging public comments at the school board meetings. I'd like to start out by saying how much Northern School District means to my family and I. When my husband and I were looking for a home, we picked this school district because of the academic success around in this sense of community that Northern York School District embodies. This district employs impressively qualified and talented teachers and staff who make a difference in the lives of the students of this community with their support and dedication to the whole student growth and success. Due to the high caliber of graduate success in this district, it only makes sense that our curriculum reflects the necessary supports for academic performance. There have been numerous studies on what supports academic success. Most recently, a peer reviewed study published in Frontiers in Education in twenty twenty-four highlights the positive impact that critical thinking has on academic performance. Another study published by Ren and Al in twenty twenty supports this connection and outlines the importance of critical thinking related to academic performance. To build upon this data, Stok at Al published a study in twenty twenty-three which reviews how allowing children access to literature is directly related to improvement in critical thinking abilities. And a similarly timed study by Bladferz and Coca-Cola underscores that reading about controversial topics improves critical thinking and helps children distinguish between fact and fiction. Thankfully, there are directives already in place that prohibit explicit sexual content in school literature in the state of Pennsylvania. What's more, our school district already has a procedure in place for our parents to opt out of reading material they don't want their child exposed to. This procedure meets the needs of the parent who does not want their child exposed to specific content. Our current policy one oh nine allows for any resident of the community to formally object to library content, which, if resulting in a decision to support the request for reconsideration, bans this content for several years after this decision with no recourse to challenge this decision. The existing policy allows for any resident in the community to determine what other parents' children have access to. The proposed policy one oh nine B P would take this a step further and involve the school board policy committee in this decision if the principal and advisory committee deny the request for reconsideration. I have several questions about this process. First, who will be collecting data to determine the positive or negative impact on student performance based on the removal of library material? What metrics will they use to determine effectiveness of this decision? Who will be tracking this data to show that this is an effective route to determine the overall best interest in the academic performance of the student body? How will this data be measured for policy retention? Who selects members of the advisory committee and their qualifications? How will the personal biases be accounted for in their decision making, presuming that they are to have the best interest of the student body in mind? Am I correct in understanding that any member of the community may formally object to material? If so, how do they prove that they are a resident? Does this make their objection and their personal information public? Based on the Supreme Court ruling of Board of Education versus PICO, school boards are not permitted to remove books from libraries because they disagree with the content. How will the policy committee be separate from the school board to ensure that our district is not set up for unnecessary litigation resulting from policies that do not follow legal precedent? How will the school board recuse itself from having influence on decisions of the advisory board or school principals to avoid future litigation? I have concerns that adopting this proposed policy would open the district up to unnecessary litigation, costing significant time and money from the district, which should not be taken away from the proposed middle school renovations and other district expenses. Increasing costs due to unnecessary litigation then, of course, falls back to the taxpayers in this district while they're all living in place here at cost in their daily lives. I urge the school board to ignore this proposal and reevaluate policy one oh nine to improve board transparency and revisions based on proper data analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Um, I just wanted to say, as one of the parents, I did read at the last board meeting. We did in fact read the books that we were challenging, as other parents have, and also challenged some of these books. It just seems a little ignorant for anyone to assume otherwise. The book that I read and challenged was Me and Earl and the John Girl by Jesse Andrews. I did so due to its sexually derogatory nature and jokes about sexual violence. I am a concerned parent who is not trying to have educational resources and history banned. We need a lot of challenging material for our students to read. However, I clarified the book I read was not age appropriate for high school and promotes sexual harassment and sexual violence in a comedic manner. This is a book for adults, absolutely, and we can read it in our homes if we wish. I wanted to say that I agree also with Dr. Meakin's explanation of the process that was clear and transparent. However, I think it would have been a little bit more transparent if the privacy of the submitting parents was upheld due to the opposition's history of harassing certain members of the community due to their personal religious and philosophical beliefs. Thank you.
Any other public comment that you missed? All right, we can enjoy our reports.
Right. Well, this will be an interview mission. I'm actually very grateful for everyone's participation, so thank you for your comments. So we are gonna talk from my superintendent's report about the Cumberland area, area, uh, career technical center. And I'm going to cede my time to, um, Mr. Wolf. You may, years past, we used to seeing Justin Room in the administrative assistant role, or excuse me, administrative director role. Uh, he had moved on to a different position in a different district and, and Mr. Wolf has taken his place. We have over ninety students that attend, uh, VOTEC and participate in some outstanding programs and it's a great avenue for them. So we're excited to hear from Mr. Wolf. And did you bring some friends or some students?
Yes, there are some students who came in here.
Very good, all right, well then I'll just turn it over to you, Mr. Wolf, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Patrick. It is my pleasure to be here and speak with you. I could stand here and talk about career and technical education and all of its benefits for a few hours if you would like, but I think at this point, you would probably rather hear from the Northern York School District students who are attending Cumberland Perry, and they can tell you a little bit about their experiences there. And then when they're done, I will make some comments about the information sheets that are in front of you and the answer to the questions you may have about the school in general. So at this time, I, it is my pleasure to introduce, uh, two of our emerging health professional students from Northern York. And I am, we leave it up to you, which one do you start?
Thank you, board.
Hello, I'm, I'm with Bolt.
And I'm Juliana Spray.
We're currently seniors at Northern High School and we're in the Emerging Health Professionals Program at VOTEC.
We both chose this program because our guidance counselor was the first to tell us about it and the amazing opportunities that go along with it. As we did some of our own research into the program, we were excited to see that it offered shadowing experiences in local hospitals. And not only that, but it offered eleven college credits through dual enrollment at MSI University and Pennsylvania College of Technology. One of the main reasons we did this program was to get out of Northern High School as great as it is and into places that would help further us for our future careers.
We're in the AM group of the program, which means that we go from eight AM to eleven AM every school day. And as a part of this program, we're expected to know the schedule and to be able to transport ourselves to and from wherever we have to be that day. So we follow a basic schedule each week. So Monday and Wednesday, we are shadowing in most local hospitals and healthcare facilities. We've been able to shadow in imaging areas such as X-ray, CT, MRI, ultrasound, nuclear medicine. And we have just recently gotten the opportunity to begin shadowing in operating rooms, ERs, and, um, wound clinics, which is really cool. And then on Tuesday and Thursday mornings, we attend MSI University for lab and lecture. Um, and during the first semester, we took anatomy and physiology one, and right now we're taking anatomy and physiology two. Uh, it has been very helpful, um, in learning how to study, uh, for college courses and seeing what a typical college class is like. And then every Friday morning, we're back at, uh, Cumberland Perry, where we are taking a medical terminology course through Pennsylvania College of Technology led by our teacher, Mrs. Porter. There, we also have a, uh, anatomy table, which is basically a giant iPad. It's a life-sized, uh, interactive touchscreen that allows you to study anatomy and physiology in three D. It allows you to do dissections and it can highlight certain areas of the body and label them as well. And I found that's a great study tool. Um, and I've only heard about them being available at colleges and universities, so I think it's very cool that as a high schooler, I'm able to use those, uh, tools.
Another opportunity that we get to experience because of VOTEC is HOSA. This is a program that gives us opportunities to develop our leadership and professionalism in healthcare field. In this program, you will also be, also able to become a student leader as an officer for our chapter. This year, I decided to run for treasurer. In HOSA, you're also able to attend Penn HOSA State Leadership Conference in March. Emma and I are attending this year to help orchestrate a blood drive that our chapter is in charge of.
So outside of school, I play field hockey. And I was playing field hockey in the fall and was able to balance my schedule and schoolwork, uh, while in the program. It was definitely tough, but it's doable and it helped to strengthen my time management skills. And I purposely chose to be in the AM group in order to avoid scheduling conflicts that would arise in the afternoon, so that's something to keep in mind. Uh, after I graduate, I will be attending Gettysburg College and playing field hockey. And I'm following the pre-med track and will be majoring in biology. Uh, this program really helped to prepare me for college courses and the expectations that come along with them and got me ahead in my studies a lot. Uh, it also taught me a lot of valuable life skills that I otherwise would not have been able to develop before becoming a full-time college student. So I'm very grateful for that.
Outside of the classroom, I'm involved in many other extracurricular activities. In the evenings, I participate in indoor color guard and dance team, Northern marching band, and dance at DeJoue School of Dance. And I've also played Special Olympics unified volleyball in the past four years. When I'm not doing this, I'm a student teacher at DeJoue and I previously was a student instructor for the middle school color guard. But I'm not in practices, I'm working at Cracker Barrel and during the summer, I also work at DNS Studios. Doing this program has really helped with my time management and learning how to balance outside of school and the school assignments. After I graduate, I will be attending the SI University. I'm majoring in nursing and minoring in molecular biology. I'm planning to get my BSN to become the RN and then continue my studies to become, um, to become an oncology research nurse. I feel that this program has helped me a lot and I'm grateful that I have the opportunity to see what a real impressive college course is like put on a smaller scale.
Thank you all for your times.
Thank you, ladies, now I'm wishing I would have spoke first. The girls say lots of very important things about the Emerging Health Professionals Program and that is just one example of some of the opportunities that we're in to provide at Cumberland Perry. One of the things that I think is really impressive with that is the fact that it, it really gives students an opportunity to make that transition from being a high school student to being a college student. They still have that connection with a high school teacher that they are seeing on a daily basis and it helps them through some of the difficulties of adjusting to the rigor of college coursework. Uh, I have heard this from several of the students that graduated last year and that are enrolled in the program this year. I think that there, the eleven credits that they are, I think there is a variety of ways that that can be helpful for the students post-graduation. For some, that may put them in a position where they can cut a semester off of their education. It may also allow them to make that transition into their, their, uh, college education with a little bit lighter load, maybe that first semester or two, to adjust to balancing work, uh, the college coursework, working at a job to, to help support themselves and pay for their education. And I, I think it just really makes that transition a lot more achievable for many of our, our graduates. I would like to point out a couple things on the, there was two sheets that were placed in front of you. The white sheet shows just some statistics about Northern students who are participating at Cumberland Perry. Uh, this year, we have ninety-two students, uh, from the Northern York School District, uh, in our programs. If you look on the right side there, you can see that they are spread out across all of the programs with a couple concentrations in, in some specific courses. I would also like to point out to you on that sheet that in the last ten years, we've had about a twenty-five percent increase in students from Northern participating, participating in the career and technical programs at Cumberland Perry. That does not happen without the support of the district and encouragement. That starts here with the board, uh, supporting the students coming to us financially, with the administration putting a system in place that helps prepare the students and make good decisions to get into these programs and will help them to succeed after graduation. I would like to thank you for that. That, I don't think there has ever been a time when a career and technical education has been more valued than it is today by, by our society. The colored sheet that is in front of you has some statistics on the bottom, I, I'm just gonna call out a couple of them. We had students earn seven hu- seventeen hundred industry credentials last year at Cumberland Perry. That's an impressive number, when you think about that, that's better than, an average of better than one credential per person. But I think to really put that in perspective, you have, you have to think about what those credentials do for the students. Uh, I'm gonna use one example would be students that earn our certified nursing assistant credential. For those students, that allows them to earn somewhere between five and seven dollars an hour more with that credential than they could without it going into the workforce. For many of those students, that puts them in a position where they can now work and support themselves and continue their, uh, education after they graduate from high school and be able to work through that process without, uh, you know, accumulating a lot of debt. I, I think that is, when you put that in that, the personal avenue, what it does for them, I think it is very helpful. Another one would be our DeJoue and Autotech students who get their state inspection and admissions inspection license. Depending on where they work, that may mean anywhere from two dollars an hour to sixty-seven dollars an hour in additional earning potential for them. Again, that puts them in a position where they can support themselves right out of high school. If they want to continue their education, they're being able to, to support themselves while they're doing that and also pay for the education. The seven hundred and twenty-three college credits, uh, in the next, uh, star there, uh, that are available to our students, I think those, just like I spoke of with the Emerging Health Professional students, those provide benefits to our students, to our graduates in many different forms in terms of making that transition post-graduation. Uh, last year, we had a hundred and twenty-nine students participate in the Cooperative Education Program. Right now, we have kind of leveled off at about a hundred and fifteen students in co-op for this school year. As we go through the spring and construction work picks up, I anticipate that that number will grow a little bit more this year. Our highest wage earning student this year was earning right around thirty-six dollars an hour on a prevailing wage construction job. Our average for those students is in the sixteen, sixteen dollars and some change, uh, per hour. So I think you could see that for, for these students, it is providing opportunities for them to get out and get experience in the workforce, earn money, and then that, that money is also getting put back into our communities and businesses in other forms. So I think that it, it is apparent that there's a lot of great opportunities that come from participating in a career and technical program. I will just tell you a little bit, I, I don't know if any of you know this, I, I worked as the teacher at Cumberland Perry for sixteen years. I will just tell you a little bit. I don't know if any of you know this. I I worked as a teacher at Cumberland Perry for sixteen years. I taught diesel mechanics there. I left and worked at another career tech school for between eight and nine years, and I am thrilled to be back at Cumberland Perry. And if there's one thing, one message that I leave with you tonight, I want you to understand that we know that we are sharing the education for ninety-two of your students. We take that responsibility very seriously, and we want to be an active partner in seeing those students succeed during and after high school. You have any questions for me?
Just one on the enrollment figures for September. How do you arrive at those numbers for quota?
Essentially, we look at the projected number of open seats that we anticipate having the following year. We take the percentage of all of the students for like for this school year, for the twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We took all of the students that are in grades nine, ten, and eleven from all of our districts. We divide that number, the the number of students in like in this case in Northern's, Northern District by the total. We take that percentage times the number of open seats in the afternoon session when Northern typically sends students to us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Our Bolivar Foundation has a new scholarship for seniors who are entering the building trades. And I'm just looking here, we got twenty-two of them right now at Cumberland Perry. So I don't know how we connect and get the word out to those twenty-two students to apply for some of those scholarships. But it's certainly a nice transition for those kids who are leaving and going into trades.
I I'm gonna respond to that in two ways. First, my email address is G-Wolfe, with an E on the end, at cbjtech.org, if you can remember that. I will get that information to our counselors, who will then share it with with the students.
That's great. And I said that because Elizabeth Ayers is here tonight, and she's a member of the leadership of Bolivar Foundation, so we build those scholarships.
We'd love to see our students get scholarships that that increase their opportunities. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I I do appreciate it.
Thank you. You're doing a great job. You really hit the ground running. A lot of big tasks in front of you. And thank you very much, Emma and Juliana, as well, if you're still here. That was fantastic. Keep up the great work.
Not to draw this out any longer, but we do have quite a bit happening this past month. Mini-Thon is March twenty-eighth to twenty-ninth, which is an overnight dance marathon that we have. We're raising money for Four Diamonds, which is supporting a cure for childhood cancer. Leading up to that, in the Fridays before, we do fundraisers like Take a Teacher, Pie a Teacher, and Delay Day. In Student Council, we are hosting an Easter egg hunt for staff families in the districts, April twelfth at nine AM. FFA Week was last week, and students were recognized along with Don Kiefer and given their jackets at the school. In art, there is a scholastic competition that recognized, that was recognizing for originality, skill, and emergence of personal voice. Winners in that in the ceramics were Zach Wolfe, which earned a Golden Key, states will be moving to the national level competition in New York City. Mackenzie Stretch won a Silver Key, Madison Lake with a Silver Key, Brooklyn Brewbreaker with an honorable mention. And in drawing paint, Maddie Zarachi got a honorable mention. In DECA, they were just at their competition, and Noah Hayes and Abby Freeze are moving to Nationals. In sports, Talia Tyree is diving in districts. Swimmers Nate Coons, Charlie Adams, Grant Kiefer, Cory Kiefer, and John Brett Snyder are going to districts. The girls' basketball team is going to states, and the boys need to win two more games to go to states, which they're playing tonight. The boys wrestlers at states are Brayden Wimmel and Gabe Johnson. And girls wrestlers at districts are Kayla Smith, Kira Dykes, Sequoia Murray, and Ever Burden. Our musical is also this Friday and Saturday at seven PM and Sunday at three PM, and it is Anastasia.
Thank you very much. Take a teacher.
No report. We have our meeting Thursday morning. Report next month. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. I ask the following checks to be approved for payment general fund. Check dated January first, two thousand twenty-five, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Check number three, four, zero, two, four, seven. Check three, four, zero, three, nine, six. Check three, four, zero, three, nine, eight. Check three, four, zero, five, seven, nine. The amount of one million, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. General Fund payroll check dated January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Check three, four, zero, four, seven, nine. The amount of one hundred thirty-one dollars and forty cents. And check dated February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Check three, four, zero, six, three, two. The amount of one hundred thirty-one dollars and forty cents. Capital Reserve Fund check dated January tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Check five, one, six. The amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand, fifty-six dollars. Two thousand twenty-two, eight. Construction Fund check dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Check one, oh, five, one. The amount of ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars. Two thousand twenty-three. Construction Fund check dated January first, two thousand twenty-five, January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Check one, oh, seven, seven. Check one, oh, eight, two. The amount of eight hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and one cent. Free service account check dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand, I'm sorry, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Check nine, three, two, oh. Check nine, three, two, nine. The amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and sixty-two cents. And student activity account check dated January third, two thousand twenty-five. Check one, one, zero, zero. Check one, one, zero, two. The amount of five thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Mr. President, I move to pay those bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, I ask that the fundling check be approved for payment general fund. Check three, four, zero, three, nine, seven. The date of January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. The amount of one hundred seven dollars to be payable to McClure Company and corporate.
Mr. President, I move to pay that bill.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I'll read respectfully. Your statement is on.
Very much. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, I ask for acceptance of the January two thousand twenty-five trigger.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Given the fact that reports are very substantial.
All right. And committee on Mr. Becker?
Thanks, Mr. Todd. I'm going to put a little, I'm going to approve by consent letters A and B.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, I move by consent for item A, numbers one and two.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Can we follow up? Mr. Shuley, there's our vote overnight truth.
Thank you.
I'd like to know the findings, Mr. Rudy.
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent letter.
Right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Building the grounds, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, Mr. President. I move to approve by consent. Building the grounds reported by item A. Just note there, there is eighty-one percent.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I got it, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move to approve by consent policy committee report to letters A and B.
Any discussion?
I would just like to make a comment, and I would like to commend Dr. Meeke and the administration for listening to the concerns of the community and having a common sense Northern approach. It's not the remedial springs policy. This is not the west shore policy. This is a Northern recommendation on how we make sure that we have the correct contents in our libraries. As Mr. Cap said, it was well presented last last month, and if anybody was here to see that, I'm sorry, last week. Just did a great job, Dr. Meeke, so thank you. One last thing, because there are guidelines that go with this. I think that this is manageable, the guidelines, but if they're not, the administration can make recommendations to change these guidelines as needed. So if we need to restrict the challenges to just parents, I'm okay with that, right? If you have to make changes to make sure that the guidelines work, please come back to the board and let us know if it's just not possible for you guys to execute this.
Session? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. On board operations, Mr. Weir is passing. And personnel.
Mr. President, I move to approve by consent personnel committee report on the letters A through O.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
President, I would move to accept the resignation of Melissa Eichelberger, School Board Director, Region Three, effective February twenty-fifth.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. Kirkpatrick is just going to speak to the process moving forward, just for the community.
Sure. The board now has accepted the board members, Melissa Eichelberger's resignation. We will be advertising the the open position in the Dale'sburg Grand in the next two weeks. We'll also have something on the website posted. We will, in addition to that, it will be in Northern News, and we'll send an email out to families as well. So we'll communicate this as best as we can, as far as there's a vacant position to be filled. We'll we'll accept letters of interest through March tenth. And then on March eighteenth, at our next committee meeting, we will have a special board meeting before our our committee meeting, at which the candidates that have submitted their application materials will be interviewed. The board will have a public discussion and ultimately make a motion to approve one of the candidates for the position. And then on March twenty-fifth, at that regular board meeting, that new board member will be sworn in and seated. That's our process.
Thank you very much. That new business. And we have recognition of the public. Comment period is for comments related to non-agenda items only. And we we headed to, so, uh, Gail and Cat.
Thank you. Gail and Cat, Gil Township. I think I said that last name. Sorry. So last Thursday, February twentieth, Pennsylvania's Auditor General, Tim before released a performance audit report that examines the revenues, expenses, and fund balance positions of five cyber charter schools that operate within the Commonwealth. How appropriate, given that all school district boards, school boards, and administrations across Pennsylvania are about to roll their sleeves and iron out budgets for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the coming months. In his report, the Auditor General calls into question and recommends changes to the existing funding formula for cyber charter schools in the existing Pennsylvania charter school law. This funding formula was established and remains unchanged since two thousand two. This makes me feel old because I graduated high school in two thousand two. This was back when most people to access the internet, not just for cyber school, relied on dial-up modems. Our children don't know what that funny sound is anymore. And Netflix was just an upstart company trying to challenge Blockbuster by mailing DVDs through an online database. In the Auditor General's report, he said, "Our recommendation is that in the next six months, the governor should appoint a task force to review the funding formula and direct it to issue a report within nine months determining a new formula that is equitable, reasonable, and sustainable. And the General Assembly should act within six months of the task force report to facilitate the enactment of legislation." I am encouraging you, the board and the administration, to write a letter of support of the Auditor General's suggestions based on his findings in this report and send it to both State Representative Mark Anderson and State Senator Don Kiefer. In this report, I hope, at the end, at the end of the night, I will email everyone of you a link to this report. It is over two hundred pages long, and it is full of eye-opening information regarding how just these five of, I believe there's thirteen or fourteen cyber charter schools out there, have raised their fund balances by tens of millions of, millions of dollars year over year over the three-year audit period. I believe in our twenty-four, twenty-five budget, our fund balance target was fourteen point four million dollars. All three of the smallest of the fun balances of the five cyber charter schools in this report exceed fifty point five million dollars, most of which was accrued during a three-year period. There were, in this time, amongst those five cyber charters, thirty-one point six million dollars combined amongst the five over three years spent in bonuses towards teachers and staff. Troy, wouldn't you like a bonus? Gift cards were purchased using these these tax dollars that come from our pockets. Gift cards are a no-no in a traditional school audit. There is not enough accountability for them. It's pretty much audit poison. Is it worth it? It might be. If more than one of these five cyber charter schools had ranked higher than Northern on the U.S. News and World Report rankings, for high school rankings, the other four that rank lower than Northern, I couldn't find an accurate ranking because apparently when as a high school, you rank in the bottom twenty-five percent of state high schools, they have a mercy rule and only list you as number four ninety-nine through six fifty-six. There is not a set funding formula covering everybody. Each school district is charged a different amount. I would argue that it is not right for us to pay either less than another school district for cyber charter students or more. I certainly don't want to pay more than other districts. And yet, this funding formula is antiquated. So this is why I encourage you all. Representative Mark Anderson, the former teacher of this district, he will know very well the importance of school funding. And Senator Don Kiefer, I believe, if I remember correctly, she gave endorsements to several of our school board members in their last election. So I would hope that she would take a letter from her, each of you, very seriously in this matter. So please, write a letter, support a new funding formula so that we can make sure as many tax dollars as possible stay within this district.
So I wanted to take a couple minutes for those of you who's only exposure to the book Damsel by Alana K. Arnold was at the previous month's board meeting. I was able to get a copy of the book. I'm not going to read any passages for anyone who may have concerns. But I just want to give you my report of what I found when I read the book. After it was reported that at the January school board meeting, there were members of the community who read aloud specific passages of three books they wanted to remove from the school libraries, I decided to read Damsel by Alana K. Arnold. While anyone may be dismayed at the content of that book based on only those specific readings, this is what I found when I read Damsel in its entirety. There were two scenes throughout the book with on-page sexual assault. They're graphic, but not detailed and very brief. Out of the, out of the three hundred odd pages in the book, the entirety of those two scenes was a total of five pages. Neither scene was written in a way that could be construed as intending to cause sexual excitement. It was written to cause a strong emotional reaction. All works of fiction are written to cause a strong emotional reaction. Anger, fear, happiness, sorrow. You can find all of these emotions in so many others in good books. You can find all of these emotions and so many others in good books. The first section of the book introduces us to Emory, the main male character. I had a hard time getting into the book because I didn't find Emory a likable character. I thought he was just a poorly written character and didn't care for his point of view throughout sexing him. His casual disregard and dismissal, even during his fleeting memories about his past sexual partners, was off-putting. As I got further into the book, I realized he wasn't a poorly written character in the beginning. He was written perfectly for a character that will be a perpetrator of abuse. In section two, we see multiple instances where Emory rescued the female main character, Anna, from danger when she wasn't actually in danger. I found it ironic that this would be a main theme of a book that has been challenged as a danger to the intended readers. As I continued reading, there were more consistent that Anna being told not to worry about it, not to think about it, just obey, just do what is expected, conform. What I saw when I read Damsel was a woman who is taken from something and convinced that she was saved when in actuality the person who saved her never had her best interests at heart. It's about a woman who is encouraged to make herself smaller, make herself less in order to fit into the slot that someone else wants her to occupy. It's important for young adults to know that their questions, feelings, emotions, and opinions are worth considering. Damsel does a good job of showing what emotional and sexual abuse can look like so that young adults can learn to recognize it for what it is. Being able to recognize abuse will help the most avoid becoming involved in relationships that will hurt them. It also shows them that even when you are beaten down, you should still fight for what you believe in. And lastly, one last thought on that book. It's a more grown-up version of the Disney animated film Frozen. Hans or Emory the rescuer, who doesn't actually want Anna or Aunt Emma, he just wanted her for access to the kingdom because he can't get it without her. That's my synopsis. Thank you.
Any other for future agendas?
Yeah, Mr. President, we have to, uh we are going to need to appoint a new board foundation on. Um and we are going to have to create a board policy to execute advisory boards for resource material. We talked about that last month. Um but there are some questions that need cleared up, so I would just ask Mr. Bud and Policy Committee to start looking at that. So we have a board policy to drive the board's unanswered questions.
And then we do have uh executive session in regards to our superintendent search after tonight. And if you would look back to the um agenda, there's special meetings and budget committee meetings coming up, so if you just pay attention to those dates and with that, I'd like to adjourn. So we moved to the Right. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the Northern School Board meeting has wrapped up and is finished. Julia and Jess will be joining me in a few minutes and um so then we'll talk about our post-game. Oops, guys, I get better at taking the tickers off. Marcus Frederickson plays us in and out of every episode. Go check him out, reverbation.com/marcusfrederickson. Share out his favorite song. Visit our storefront, bonfire.com/store/boilingpointpodcast. Pick up uh some apparel, t-shirts, sweatshirts. We have hats. We have a couple uh, we have mugs, travel mugs. Pick up some apparel. Jess and Julia will be joining me in just a few moments. I was not able to actually watch along with this meeting like I usually do with these. I had to take care of uh something else while we were live streaming the meeting, so I didn't get to watch a whole lot, just a little bit at the beginning and a little bit at the end. A big uh part of this meeting I know is about the banning of books. Um parents for it, parents against it, so I know that that's what uh made the reading, the meeting run a little bit longer than uh than we were again anticipating with this watch-along. And Julia and Jess are at the meeting. They use their phone to live stream it so that I can have them in the uh studio here to live stream the meetings uh so that delay is from them getting out of the meeting and into their car and then they rejoin me in the studio, so. That is the delay between the meeting ending and when they rejoin me for a little post-game. We will probably start separating these and having it be like ten or fifteen minutes after the meeting ends normally, but we're still trying to figure out how to do Northern because they don't livestream uh the way the West Shore School District does. The West Shore School District livestreams their uh school board meetings, so it's real easy. We can do a watch-along, we commentate while the meetings are going on. But with Northern, we're not able to do that uh because you wouldn't be able to hear them. Uh because the sound is uh not although I noticed uh some of the school board members this week were speaking more into the microphone, so it was a little bit easier to hear. You probably didn't have to turn your volume up so loud uh as we did uh the last week when we did these. And I just got a message from them. They should be joining me here in just a moment. And I have to get some uh put some Marcus Frederickson music here in the studio for uh some waiting music for when I'm waiting in between. And here we go.
We forgot to enter studio.
All right, it's okay. I'm here just vamping away and plugging my stuff until until you guys arrived. So I had explained to everybody that I wasn't able to sit and watch a lot of the meeting tonight uh as I had something else to do, which I don't normally do during these meetings. I try and listen along and stuff, but tonight I wasn't able to do that, so. Seemed like there was definitely some pushback against the uh books.
Yeah, and what's funny is I read the policy, uh well, or I read the agenda yesterday and I did not see the library resources on there yesterday, so they must have just updated. I was actually on the phone with a friend and we were both talking how it wasn't there. That told you all this is going to be business as usual and it wasn't.
Yes, uh that's, yes, we thought it was just going to be a standard school board meeting uh on, because I talked to Julia beforehand, uh letting her know that I had something else to do while the meeting was actually going on, uh since we can't talk anyway. Though the, I will say, I noticed it seemed like a couple of our school board members were speaking more into the microphone tonight. Is that a fair assessment?
I think so, yeah, yeah.
It seemed like it was a little bit easier to hear them.
Yeah, there was also two members that were out, one was out sick and I don't know where the other member was. They probably had something else, so, but there wasn't like the voting for the policy. Um I will say, a lot of these comments, they keep talking about this was a fabricated thing and that we were fed these books. I'm going on record, we are members of Moms for Liberty, and I know so many of the people in the past have, you know, gone gone before the board, you know, stating we need to keep Moms for Liberty out of this school district. Well, we're here. We have moms in every school in this district that are members of Moms for Liberty, so it was not a fabricated thing. We got our list from Moms for Liberty and we are only targeting the books that violate state law under Title eighteen. There's a lot that we have, that we do not agree with, we do not like. But we are not submitting forms for those other than don't allow my child to read this. So I'm putting that out there on record that this was not fabricated and we got lists from Moms for Liberty.
Okay, can you tell, tell me that title one more time? Pennsylvania title, what is it? State?
It's Title eighteen. You know the rest of it.
Chapter fifteen subsection E.
All right, I'm going to definitely investigate this and look into this and then uh we can, I think, I was uh just messaging Jess and said that we need to have you two on or one of you on or both of you uh to talk about the books that you want banned and why you want to have them removed from the library. That way we can also, the viewers can also, and some of the parents who are tuning in can also understand why you want these books removed. Um we're just kind of getting into it here. This is only our second meeting covering it and we're so, I'm so unraveling what's going on and piecing all this together, so we'll definitely work on putting that together here in the next in the next two weeks. Before the next round of meetings, uh we'll try and see if we can't get that together.
Yeah, yeah, I think the books that they kept trying to say, like they kept, one woman kept mentioning The Hunger Games.
Yeah.
Ridiculous argument ever. I mean, I love The Hunger Games. And we're not talking about biology books and books about puberty at all, you know, and there's some books that do talk, like a book that I read in high school that I absolutely love is To Kill a Mockingbird. You know, yeah, it talks about rape and racial things, but that's done in an, in an educational way. I'm not touch, you know.
Yeah, I love, I love hearing The Hunger Games one at the beginning of the meeting. I did hear that. I said, oh, this is going to be more than what Julia thought it was. I knew right as soon as I heard that, I said, oh, this is not just going to be business as usual. Something happened, so. Yeah, and The Hunger Games, that's a great comparison. Um and and I'm sure the books, I have not read the books. I'm sure the books are very good. The first movie was very good. I did not really, I think the other ones really unraveled. But I I could see how the books were very good. Um.
Yeah, my, my children.
How's that? Yeah, how is that even a compared? That's not even like, of course, there's, there's books out there with all kinds of things in it like that.
Yeah, exactly. And that, oh, go ahead, Jess.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say like, the opposition is just using this as cannon fodder. You know what I mean? Like these no are harmless that are of course challenging and that children can read. They're a little challenging and you know, there's some big stuff in there. Um but that is not, like Julia said, like that is not a, you know, a uh fair, you know.
Preparation, yeah.
Exactly, thank you.
Yeah.
What is, can you, can you tell us about one of the books that you are trying to get removed right now and why?
The only ones that we are trying to get out of the public schools, not the public library, okay? I, it's nothing in the public library.
Absolutely.
You know, what I, anything that falls under Title eighteen of state law. Because that right there is going to put the school at risk. Now, when we did our readings last month, my husband was watching uh from home on the livestream and he's like, when I got home, he's like, it sounded like you were reading penthouse letters. You know?
Yeah.
Just it, you know, and I don't care what the content is, you, you know, that's for adults and they keep saying young adult, young adult, young adult. Eighteen and younger or under eighteen is not young adult. You are a minor.
Yes, that's true. At least definitely in Pennsylvania. Some states have provisions and stuff where you can be uh considered an adult. But here in Pennsylvania, unless you're emancipated, you are considered a minor until you turn eighteen.
Yeah.
And we'll, I'm going to look into Title eighteen and some of the wording and that type of stuff and then we'll save that for when we go, when we talk about some of the books you guys are trying to get removed and why. Uh that way you guys aren't sitting in your car and you can, you know, have your information in front of you. Uh is there anything else in the meeting that you want to talk about that happened?
Um I just, I wanted to mention that, um, oh, actually, maybe not. Uh never mind. We'll save that for another meeting. Never mind.
That's fine. Um yeah, like I said, I didn't get to watch along uh too much, just a little bit at the beginning and a little bit at the end, so I know that it was, it went longer than we initially anticipated again, so.
Yeah.
That's what happens.
That one member of the community that got up and stated she used the Bible as a reference, like, oh, we need to ban this and um basically attacked Christians. Um you'd have to go back and re-watch it.
Yeah, I will go re-watch that part. We'll definitely address that then in an episode as well.
That was just, I'm, I'm, that was disgusting.
I, I want to say something really quick. I have Title eighteen, um chapter uh five nine oh three right here. I just wanted to like quickly read a little bit of it just so people understand like what we're talking about. Um obscene and other sexual materials and performances and um subsection A is offenses defined. No person knowing the obscene character of the materials or performances involved shall display or cause or permit display of any explicit sexual materials as defined in subsection C, which I'll go down to in just a second. Um on any display rack, billboard, display board, viewing screen, or showcase. Um and then down to subsection C, um this is in regards to dissemination of minors as a crime. Let me go, I went too far. There we go. Okay, so no person shall knowingly, this is subsection C of chapter five nine oh three. No person shall knowingly disseminate by sale, loan, or otherwise explicit sexual materials to a minor. Explicit sexual materials as used in this subsection means materials which are obscene or any picture, photograph, drawing, sculpture, motion picture, film, videotape. Um and then it goes down to any book. This is item number two, any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced or sound recording which contains any matter enumerated in paragraph or explicit and detailed verbal description of the narrative accounts of sexual excitement, sexual conduct, or sadomasochistic abuse and which taken as a whole is harmful to minors. This is Pennsylvania state law Title eighteen. Which is what, we found this material in our library. That's why we're here tonight, so that's all.
Yeah, no, that's great. Thank you for looking that up real fast so that I did not have to try and type and read and talk all at the same time. Um so yeah. That pretty much spells out what it is, and if there's stuff that violates that, then obviously it should be removed.
That right there, the school's in violation of breaking the law and that, I mean, they keep talking about litigation. Well, that's going to bring litigation to the school district.
And I, like, I would.
You know, a lot, a lot of people will check Public Minutes, which is why I found it was interesting that Northern still does that uh and don't livestream it. I is, I, I did find that a little bit bizarre, but yeah, they, they're, now that we're here, you know, they're going to get coverage on it. People are going to see it. Yeah, they could end up getting sued for it if they, if they're not careful.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready?
I don't think any of the local schools need uh, need any lawsuits. Don't they have enough trouble with their budgets?
Yeah, yeah.
And that could be why some of the books that we challenged were quickly removed. Um a couple of them were, a few of them were. So I mean, that's a good thing. We got to just really light the fire under their butts and just make sure everybody is, you know, following code and because we don't want um that kind of trouble.
Yeah, due diligence. You got to stay on top of it and make sure that there's follow-through.
Yeah, yeah, and it's shocking that so many people are okay with this. I mean, if you want your child to have that, then go to the public library. It's free.
Yep.
You know, that, you know, that's what the li, public library is there for.
You can sit in the table and read any of those books, you know, pleasure. That's, that's up to you, but as far as minors being exposed to it, totally different story. You know what I mean? I mean, in a, those books are not going to be in the minor section at all, so why are they minor section of a school? Because all the books are for minors in that school, so.
Yeah, even the high school, even the high school, there's still minors. You think high school, you, you know, you start treating them as adults, but they are still technically minors under the law.
You're mining their careers and and future prosperity by saying they're minors, obviously, um but this is just, you know, law and uh, yeah.
Well, we'll stay, we're going to stay on top of the coverage and um I'll speak to you, Julia, and you, Jess, about putting together the episode on um, on the books. And we'll break down Title eighteen so that way we can help everybody understand why these books aren't supposed to be there. Um whether you agree with the law or not is a different conversation. We're just going to talk about whether or not they break the law. And uh we'll do that. We'll try and get that organized before the next round of school board meetings in March, uh so look for that. I'll likely get them uh get our live streams scheduled here in the next week or so, so look for that and mark it on your calendar so that you can follow along. And uh next time we do Northern's uh these meetings, I am, we might do, we might separate it. I'm not sure yet. We're still putting these together because like I said, they don't livestream it, so we're still figuring out the logistics of how we handle this and and then the post-game afterwards, so. We'll, we're still working on this. Uh we might do it a little bit differently next week to try something different. But so far it's working at least good enough, I think, to get the information out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, go ahead.
I was just saying thank you again.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Absolutely. Uh thank you guys for helping me do this because I would, likely wouldn't be able to do it as, you know, not nearly as well without you guys, you know, at least being in the meetings and providing the, the camera and the phone to livestream the meetings here in the studio, so. And I do want to say thank you to the Northern School Board members who spoke into the microphone. Uh thank you for listening last week when we asked you to. We appreciate that. Thank you for listening last week when we asked you to. We appreciate that. It was a lot easier to hear you this week, I think, than last week. So it's a lot easier to follow along. We had a lot of viewers. Thank you for tuning into this. Thank you for watching along. Feel free to leave comments and then in the post-game, we can address some of your comments. If you want to leave any comments during the meeting, go ahead and then we can address them here with Jess and Julia in the post-game. If you're a parent of the Northern School Board District and you want to get involved with these or help out or whatever, then reach out to us, send an email. I put Julia and Jess's email in the description of these videos. As long as I get them right this time and have them the right email address going to the right person, then we'll be okay. So hopefully I can do that. Marcus Frederickson is going to play us out. Check out his music, reverbation.com/marcusfredrickson and visit our storefront, bonfire.com/store/thewoilingpointpodcast. Pick yourself up some apparel. Until next time, for Julia and Jess, I am your host, J D, and that's the end.